Okay, well, I think I will get us started. So, welcome Representative Omar, we're very happy to have you here with us. Thank you for joining us and thank you to your staff as well for joining us. And, oh, one second, and then I just want to share very briefly. So, we just want, we want to say thank you before I start off and talk about kind of the purpose of our meeting today. I just want to say thank you for your tremendous leadership and for your advocacy for Richfield, for cities at the local level, for community members who are essential workers, community members who are underserved for really our entire community during COVID, but across the board, just your role at, at the federal level. We are tremendously grateful for the work that you're doing. And we thank you for all the support and resources you've helped bring to Richfield in our community. So first, thank you so much for your leadership.
Oh, thank you.
And then, just to give a brief recap of our meeting today, it's just some time with you to hear from the Richfield City Council and from a couple of our staff around what some key priorities are of ours at the federal level. And I was going to pass it to our council members to just share a little bit about their perspectives, what they're hearing, what they're seeing, and things that they'd like to communicate to you. And then I can pass it to our city manager, who will kind of help lead the staff portion as well of top priorities for us. And we have a couple of our staff here that are gonna go into more detail. And then we'll just pass it to you and your team if you want to respond to those things. I know you gave us some great handouts in preparation for the meeting of who to contact and things you're working on. But if there's anything you want to update us as well. Many questions from folks before I just pass it to council. All right, well, this is an opportunity, I'm going to pass it to the city council members, for anyone who would like to just share a little bit about concerns that they would like to, to share with the Congresswoman at the federal level that we make sure she's aware of. So, is anyone interested in sharing first? Go ahead, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Congresswoman, for being here. My name is Sean Hayford O'Leary, I represent Ward Two here in Richfield. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about highways. I'm really excited with Democratic Congress and a Democratic White House that hopefully we're going to get a great infrastructure bill coming up. I'm really hopeful that our investments, this is a really unique opportunity, are going to center reducing climate change and improving the health and safety of our communities. So much of our investments, you know, Richfield is really affected by highways. So much of our investments are sort of one step forward, two steps backward. And by that, I mean, so all of Richfield, 100% of Richfield, 36,000 residents live within a mile of a freeway, and the majority of them live within half a mile. So, things like, you know, not being able to get across into other neighborhoods because it's blocked by a freeway, things like air pollution and noise pollution affect our residents really deeply. And whenever we want to make an improvement to that, getting a noise wall, getting another bridge to let people cross to the grocery store, that kind of stuff, it's all tied to expansion of highways. So, as we're making the problem better in the short term, medium term, we're making it worse in the long run by putting more cars on the road, creating more pollution. So, my, my hope really, as we see this move forward, is a, a change from where we're prioritizing expanding freeways, expanding highways, to being able to get some of those mitigations to communities like Richfield without an expansion. So, standalone funding, funding for things like mitigating freeways, things like adding bus lanes out of existing lanes, and of course, other things like prioritizing buses, trains, walking and biking, and good alternatives to driving. So, that's, that's my hope, and thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Hi, Councilmember Wayland, thank you for joining us. We just did a quick intro, and essentially what I'm doing right now is just going through the council members' priorities, and then I'll pass it to staff. So, is there another council member who would like to share their priorities?
I can go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilmember Supple, and then we'll go to Councilmember Troutman once you're done.
All right, first of all, Congresswoman Omar, thank you for joining us today. And I apologize for not having video or having a little Wi-Fi issues this, this afternoon. But anyway, thank you so much. And I also wanted to say thank you for all the leadership you've been showing to make sure that there's been funding for, for cities. Because we all know that different levels of government help out in different ways. And we really need, needed funding that was targeted to the cities. So, thank you so much for that, that really helps us. And we've been working on things like trying to help with rental assistance and small business loans and that type of thing. But I'm really worried of what's going to happen when the eviction moratoria gets lifted and that we are going to have more housing insecurity. And so that was one thing that I'm hoping you can help us focus on to make sure that people have a housing security and a place to live. I also am, my day job is I'm a middle school teacher, and so I am in contact with families a lot. And I know that the, the federal food programs have really, I know that the families have food and nutrition, but I always worry when we get to the summer months. And last summer, the federal government worked together, was through the cities and the schools, to make sure that the food was plentiful for everyone. So, I want to make sure that we're making sure that kids and families all have access to food. So, those are the two things that I'm most concerned about. But I also want to echo what Councilmember Hayford O'Leary said about the transportation, because the federal government has a big role in helping us with those kind of issues. It becomes an equity issue for the, the people of Richfield. So, again, thank you so much for your leadership. And I don't think I signed Councilmember Supple's number, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Oh, and it looks, Councilmember Troutman, are you there? Looks like he's not. Is there, Councilmember Wayland, are you interested?
Hello?
Are you there? Go ahead.
I, I think I'm here. I feel like the attorney who had to say, "I'm not a cat, I'm here." And this year, we just, the, the planning has made incredible difference in the lives of all our constituents, and so I'm really grateful for that. One thing I mentioned, before I say anything else, I want to thank your staff too, for how responsive that they've been and easy to, to get a hold of. And we're grateful for your leadership, that is for sure. And one, I think just to go with Representative Hayford O'Leary, in terms of, of infrastructure spending and, and how critical that is, we are a shrimp among, when it comes between Minneapolis and, and I mean.
Councilmember Troutman, it's hard to hear you. I don't know if there's somewhere you can go, it's cutting out. Okay, so I'm going to go to Councilmember Wayland, and then maybe Councilmember Troutman will have a better connection afterwards. Go ahead, Councilmember Wayland.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Representative Omar, and all of your staff for, for being here, for the, the great work that you're doing. I think especially for all of the COVID relief efforts, but especially the most recent relief bill. I'll be repeating some themes, but would echo what Councilmember Supple shared about the concern for the end of the eviction moratorium, that I think having the, the housing relief dollars for that specifically is important. But also would just name that we have been really working and struggling at times to find the funding needed to address the housing crisis that existed before the pandemic. And so, the federal government is having more, more resources available than our city government. As much as housing can be funded from a federal level is extremely helpful that we benefit from and rely on several different forms of federal grants that, that assist different projects. But those, those are often highly competitive because the funding is limited. So, whatever is possible there would be wonderful. We'll also just name that around something that we don't do much as a city, but that impacts our neighbors, our residents, is the, the immigration policies and whether or not there is a path to citizenship. And I would love to see that conversation continue to move forward. And then, hard to measure the impact at a local level, but just will share that I personally am deeply concerned about the restrictions on voting rights that are being passed, and don't doubt that you are as well, and would hope that we can continue working toward more federal protections against voting discrimination, re-passing a new or re-upping the, the protections in the Voting Rights Act from the 60s. And then the last thing I'll say is just that, especially now with the Chauvin trial going on, I'm continually thinking about what, what public safety looks like beyond just policing. And that I think there are, there's a whole lot of ideas that have been tried in different places that are, are working, that are imagining a new what that looks like. And I, I don't even have a specific suggestion, but just know that that is a conversation we need to continue having as a whole country, but certainly in our local areas as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Troutman, do you want to try to finish your comments now?
Now you're muted.
Yeah, there we go.
Hey, thank you. Sorry about that, folks. I'll, I'll, I'll try to be, be brief. I mean, I'm not sure where I got cut off, but appreciate you very much, Representative Omar. And I'd just say there may be three quick things, if you could, if you could touch on them in addition to everything my colleague said. One, like Councilmember Wayland mentioned, you know, how we continue to respond to, to law enforcement issues. Prior to the previous administration, there, there was a patterns and practices investigation that I believe was ongoing with the FBI, working with local law enforcements on their patterns and practices. My understanding is that that was terminated under the previous administration. And if you would, would join other community members in encouraging that that be reinstated, I think that could, that could be an area of collaboration. And similarly, there were obviously more agris of aggressive policies with regards to deportation and in ICE. And I'm wondering if you could speak to whether there's been an evolution or change in priorities on the ground level here, and if there are things that are happening that we can communicate to our constituents with regards to, to ICE and folks without status in our community. But again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. And I'll wrap up the portion of the council members' priorities with just a couple things. So, in addition to all of the things that the council members have already said, just a couple other things. So, just looking at our public health infrastructure previous to this, it was severely lacking with the majority of our money and support going to healthcare and, and really healthcare waste and, and a system that is very ineffective. So, of course, with COVID, we've seen the huge need of investing in our public health infrastructure overall. So, anything that can be done to kind of allocate resources in the health, from the healthcare system to the public health system would be huge, because that's a big, big issue that's just not going to go away. And, and in terms of immigration, we thank you for all of your efforts in really advocating for immigration reform. And just a piece to, to think about, and, and hopefully we come to the day where we do seek comprehensive immigration reform. And with any change that comes, you know, we just want, want our policymakers at the federal level to think about what kind of resources, support do local communities, cities, municipalities, and local communities need to carry that out. So, I was just having a discussion earlier today where we talked about barriers to, to filing multiple applications and the financial barriers, people to help fill out those forms, people, you know, legal assistance. So, there's the reform itself, but then there's all the tools and infrastructure needed to help carry out that reform effectively so that our families can benefit and go through that process. And then, just a couple contextual pieces, I think of, you know, the impacts of COVID and of systemic racism have been, and, and they were exacerbated, they're being exacerbated with COVID, but they are generational. And so, when we think about whether it's an education response, housing, public health, whatever it is, the impact of what we're going through right now is generational. And so, kind of what are some long-term strategies that, that we might want to consider? How can we do things differently? This is the chance to really rip the Band-Aid off and do things differently, because COVID has really deepened and exacerbated those inequities. And there's groups that have, you know, just made so much money off of what we're living through. And the majority of people, especially BIPOC folks and other disenfranchised communities, have just been set back so much. And so I just think about what are those long-term approaches that we can take? So, those are the only other things I would add. But I don't know if there's any other comments from council members before we go to staff? And then I know we have just a couple staff points. So, if you're okay, Congresswoman, if we just go to the staff, they'll share their priorities and then we can pass it to you and your team. Great, so, thank you. I'll pass it to City Manager Rodriguez to talk about a few staff priorities.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm sorry, there's going to be a lot of thank you, so I'll try and keep it brief. But I, I do thank you for coming to a meeting with us. I also want to thank your staff. They are in touch regularly, and I really appreciate it. And as you can hear, our council members do as well. Also appreciate them attending our legislative breakfast earlier this year. I would just echo some of the priorities that our council members raised. We are really grateful for the American Rescue Plan. Thank you for your efforts to make sure funding for cities was included in that. It's going to address many of the needs that we're struggling with as a city, but also what we're hearing from our community. We have, in the past relief package, we were able to share that with our community. We're trying to figure out the details of it now. They're still, you know, they're still coming. And we certainly want to make sure that what, what we are sharing with the community is really effective and targeted, and we're not duplicating what some other funding is going towards. So, we would just ask that your staff continue to share any guidance with us on that as it comes out. We're also really grateful that there's now a process for funding community-proposed projects or bringing back earmarks. I, I was a little taken aback at the turnaround time on that. But I contacted your staff today, actually, and we're going to get a meeting this Thursday. So, I do appreciate that. But just to tell a little story, I mean, you, you know this, infrastructure is such a huge need, and there's such scarce resources out there. And when the states don't have enough funding, those projects fall to the counties. And when the counties don't have enough funding, those projects fall to cities. And so, cities are trying to constantly repair things that aren't their own infrastructure in addition to their infrastructure, which has, we have vast needs on our own. And it took, it took Richfield 40 years. We just celebrated getting that last piece of funding for the 77th Underpass project. And it took us 40 years to cobble that together. And it's this vision that's going to support the work that they're doing on the 494 and 35W improvements. So, vitally important, and we're, we're hoping that this new process to have locally funded initiatives get funded will, will not take us four years to get things done. And I do want to, we wrote a letter, but we, one of our biggest projects that we'd like to support is MidDOT's application to the Infra Grant for the 35W and 494 work. We, we not only want to see that funded, but we want to see it done well, not just for cars, but to make sure that people that are using transit, people that are walking and rolling and using bikes at those interchanges, that they also have good access. And so that's critically important for Richfield, especially the intersection, I'm sorry, the interchange at Portland, but, but at 35W as well. And so those are just a few priorities. And again, I'm, I know I'm repeating what our council priorities are. But I'll turn it over to Julie Urban. She's our housing manager, and she'll give you some details on another priority area, which is housing and especially affordable housing in the city.
Thank you, Congressman, Congresswoman Omar, for this opportunity. I, I'm a little bit out of, my issue is a little bit different. Our, our issue is more technical in nature, and it's related to overall housing stability, as our mayor likes to talk, rather than talk about affordable housing. But housing stability is really what's important to all. And a big piece of that is the housing voucher program. And, you know, a big ask would be, we need more money, we need more money in vouchers. And, and we even put local funding into vouchers because we feel it's such an important vital way to really, I mean, people should be paying what they can afford and based on their income. And, and, yeah, so that's a big structural thing, but there is a very small, a couple of small things that would help us. We locally administer that program, and we think we do it in a really great way. There's four, St. Louis Park, Bloomington, Plymouth, and Richfield all locally administer the program. And, and we just provide really high-quality services because we're small. And unfortunately, however, the admin that comes from HUD is not enough really to cover our costs. Right now, we're able to, to manage because we have quite a few port-ins that come in and bring a fee. If we didn't have those port-ins, we would have to locally supplement that. And we have had to do that in the past. So, one of the suggestions we, we'd like to work on is just changing the fee structure that would acknowledge that small housing authorities, that we all have some base costs. We all have IT needs and, you know, just certain base costs. And if we could have a base fee and then, you know, pay us per voucher. Right now, we just get paid for, per voucher. And so it just really isn't a great way to do things. A couple of years ago, there was a big study that looked at the overall fee structure, and it went nowhere. And so if we could maybe scale that back, and again, just look at the idea of having some base funding that just meets some basic needs, like for the copier and the, the computers and stuff. And then the other pieces, there used to be a fee called a hard-to-house fee. So, a lot of our clients struggle with mental health challenges. And again, the beauty of our small housing authority is that we can provide better assistance to those folks, but it is very staff-intensive. And if we could, you know, be, acknowledge some of that extra work that goes into that, because we really think that it's key to housing stability, not just that they get a voucher, but that they have that person, that human being in our office who really can help. If they're having struggles with their landlord, you know, we can step in and we can help mediate that and really keep, keep them housed and keep their voucher and, and again, that housing stability. So, those are, you know, kind of very specific things, not quite the big picture stuff that everyone else is talking about. But when it comes down to, you know, really making that big picture stuff work, it's those little details that can really, really be helpful. So, thank you for the opportunity just to throw those couple of ideas out there. Yeah, if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Thank you so much, Julie. So, City Manager Rodriguez, is that, does that conclude the part, the review from staff? Great, great, so I'll pass it to the Congresswoman and her staff. I know we just shared a bunch of different things, and I know you're working on so much. So, feel free to just give us an update or respond to any of those.
Yeah, well, Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff, it's really an honor to be given this opportunity to come and be in virtual community with you all. I know these, these meetings would have been much better if we, if we were all in person together. But it is really just a great opportunity. And I just want to thank you all for your partnership in, in serving our shared constituents. It is the work that you all do that allows us to adequately serve our constituents. And so I really do value that and value these conversations that we get to engage in because it, it allows us to, to fight for the actual resources that are needed on behalf of our constituents. Much of our, our work in the last couple of months has gone into the $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan. And it's been great to, to see that there are a lot of resources that are going to state and local municipalities, that there is $1,400 checks that people are able to receive and that we expanded the number of people that, that are able to get that, families with mixed statuses and dependents as well. And with the American Rescue Plan, we also expanded unemployment insurance, and we were able to get a lot of money in regards to public health funding. There is a huge chunk of money that's going to housing assistance. There's a lot of money in supporting homelessness. And we were able to increase SNAP funding as well and get the child tax credits and earn income tax credit in that. And there is an expanded childcare cost as well as part of, of that package. I know that majority of the details on how municipalities are able to access those resources isn't fully out there. And so if you have questions, please, you know, don't hesitate to reach out to our office to be able to answer some of those questions or concerns. We did sort of trace back some of the challenges that came with the CARES funding to try to mitigate some of those for a while. And, you know, we tried to formulate this package with as little barriers to accessing the resources as possible. And so it should be a lot more flexible and accessible to, to, to the state and local municipalities and agencies to, to be able to get those resources and get them out the door as quickly as possible. CDC just expanded the moratorium to June. I know that our governor here continues to, to do a better job than the federal government is doing. So, we are lucky in, in that regard. And I know that even though we've put a lot of money into housing assistance, that that isn't really enough for a lot of our communities. So, we continue to advocate for a piece of legislation that we introduced to, to cancel rent and mortgage payments and to create a specific fund with HUD that would just address that. Because we know that, you know, there's, there is a crisis that existed before the pandemic began with housing, and they will continue to get worse if we do not actually comprehensively address the, the problem. With the package also, there is a lot of money in, in trying to get the vaccine distributed as, as quickly as possible. So, I'm actually really glad that Minnesota, as of tomorrow, will be able to vaccinate everyone that is above the age of 16, which is really exciting. I had a morning visit this, this morning with fourth graders who said, "Can you do legislation that allows us to get vaccinated?" And I was like, "Actually, you might get vaccinated a lot sooner than expected." So, it's really exciting to see the, the expansion of that. And, you know, in Minnesota, we are reaping the benefits of, of what happens when you have people who are competent in, in positions of, of leadership. And so we're doing a lot better than many states are doing. And I know that our communities of color have had some barriers, and we're working to overcome some of those barriers so that everybody has adequate access to, to vaccination. We continue to have our task, Housing Task Force. Your state representative is part of, he's the co-chair of, of the task force. So, you know, if any of the city council members or yourself, Mayor, would love to, to come or to share some ideas there, as we curate ideas and figure out how to overcome some of those barriers, we do invite you all to, to do that. Talia and Connor will leave some information on how to do that. We were able to start the, restart the conversation around addressing some of the immigration challenges that we have in this country with a system that really is broken and in some ways does not allow for the dignity and humanity of our neighbors to be full. And in some ways, does not allow for the dignity and humanity of our neighbors to be fully recognized. So we repass the Promise and Dream Act that was passed in the last Congress, just a little over a week ago. And we are working. The votes aren't completely there yet on the Citizenship Act, which is the comprehensive immigration reform package that the administration has talked about. We are a little short in 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 the number of votes that we need in order to bring that package to a vote in the House. And I'm sure it, there will be bigger hurdles when it gets to the Senate. So we're trying to get that through. And what that will do is it will create a path to residency and citizenship for 12 million undocumented folks in in our country and hopefully address some of the things that you all have raised in in regards to immigration. I acutely understand, Mayor, the the challenges that people have in coming up with the resources that they need in order to stabilize their status in 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 this country. And many people actually become undocumented because they don't have the resources that they need in order to to continue that stabilization. And one of my colleagues has a piece of legislation called the New Deal for on immigration, I think. Am I saying that right, Connor, that the name of that legislation? Grace Ming out of New York and we joined that effort. So I'm an original co-sponsor of that piece of legislation. And that actually is all addressing the the system. Once you are able to, you know, have a path. How do we get resources to people to be able to apply for residency, to apply for citizenship? What are the barriers in regards to getting fingerprinted, going through the interview process and all, all of those kind of systematic barriers that that exists that are cumbersome in in many ways? So we'll hopefully in in our conversations and trying to move this comprehensive immigration policy, try to include as many pieces of of legislation so that it it is actually comprehensive and it speaks to many of the aspects of immigration that some of us who are immigrants ourselves in in Congress, who've gone through this process ourselves, can can speak to. I think that there, there is, I will say, Simon, a shift in in a more humane approach to immigration with the new administration, even though it hasn't actualized yet. And so there was a moratorium on deportation and it was struck down by the courts. And so deportations still continue and they are disproportionately actually impacting black undocumented immigrants in in our country. We also have been pushing the administration to put out clear directives to immigration enforcement agencies, which they haven't really done so. And so in Minnesota, because we still have a lot of people from the past administration in place, they have not been engaged in a humane process. And it's been really challenging for a lot of our immigrant advocate nonprofits and and, you know, legal force, legal folks to to be able to to navigate. Because I think in in many ways, we were more psychologically prepared to take on this battle when we knew clearly that we had an administration that was an adversary. So it's really hard when you have an administration that has the right talking points and, you know, clearly wants to put forth a policy that is very much different than the past administration, but has not done so yet. And so it's a very confusing process to to be engaged in because you want to scream. And and it almost, you know, feels premature in 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 many ways because people are just like, give them time. And you're like, but it's still painful to live through. Like, our communities are still being traumatized. How much time are we supposed to give you to be able to like, write a piece of paper that gives a clear directive of what you want your agencies to look like? What is it going to take for you to appoint new people in into these positions? What is it going to take for you to actually do the things that you said you were going to do? And so it's been really challenging, I would say, for for some of us. And it's been really challenging for a lot of local folks who do this work on behalf of our undocumented immigrants. And and so, you know, we we've, we've started the immigration process. I think we've gotten a handle over the financial crisis and and the pandemic in many ways with the American Rescue Plan. And so now we're moving to the packages that come after. And one of the priority legislation that has just been announced, and I I don't have the full details yet, is the infrastructure legislation. Their their comprehensive infrastructure funding. And so I don't know what's fully in there and how to talk about it yet. But the Progressive Caucus, which I'm the whip off, is putting their priority list of things that they they want to see in this infrastructure bill and how we think the bill should actually be formulated and what it will take for it to have our our support. And we understand that it it needs to be a package that addresses our climate crisis. It needs to be a package that, you know, addresses some of the challenges all of you have been experiencing through this virtual call, which is infrastructure related broadband and talking about what 21st century infrastructure package should actually look like and how much resources we should be devoting to the expansion of broadband in that. And there's like, school infrastructure that that needs to be included in in the package. There's infrastructure in regards to healthcare systems, technology and all of those things. So I I know they are talking about it as a comprehensive package and I don't think a lot of us see it that way. So we're gonna work in in trying to to do that. And so I appreciate all of you for bringing up some of the priorities around that because then we we have ideas to to take back with us and and infuse it in in into this this package. I will say that Julie, a lot of the ideas that that you have, technical fixes, you know, will be something, hopefully Talia will send it up to our Ledge team in in DC because there will be a housing component that that is going to to come through. We passed a housing package in the last Congress that didn't go anywhere. And I know that Chairwoman Maxine Waters is working in reintroducing it. And I think some of those technical fixes are some of the things that we can talk to the committee, which I don't sit on, but we can talk to them and and see if they'll take up some of those. Or we can introduce them as amendments and 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 try to see if if we can push, push them through. The biggest problem that we have noticed and that we've been raising since the pandemic began is that, you know, obviously, there, 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 there was a crippling devastating pandemic that has caused a financial crisis in all of our communities across the country. And it made sense for us to come up with as many resources as we could to try to throw it at the problem. But none of the amounts of money that we're spending is going to address the systematic disinvestment in in in, you know, social and economic programs that our communities have needed for decades. And so our conversations have been around, you know, figuring out what of these programs that we have funded could be expanded? And how do we make any of the investments that we've made stick around long after the pandemic is gone? So in regards to housing, it's one thing to try to come up with rental assistance, though we have a housing shortage, right? And so where is the resource that's going into addressing the housing shortage that we have? It's okay for us to say, yes, we should spend $5 billion in addressing homelessness. But homelessness has been persistent in our communities for decades. And so how do we make that resource sustainable in the long term in order to continue to address that and eliminate it? In in regards to, you know, halving child poverty, it's good that we've done that with this package. But can we do that, right? And in a way that is a sustainable program? So that we don't, we don't have child poverty as a persistent problem in in our communities? The increases to to SNAP benefits and and others, how do we make that stick around? Like stimulus checks are great, but how do we make them not be a a one time thing that we do every eight months, right? How can we make them reoccurring monthly? And so these are the the conversations that we are continuing to to have because we understand that the needs that we are addressing today are needs that our communities have had for a really long time. And there, there are things that we have to have a serious conversation about. And I know that we, we did a a pick pack, a big housing package that had lots of resources for Section Eight vouchers. But like I said, it didn't go anywhere in the Senate, so we don't have it. And hopefully we'll be able to pass it in in this Congress. I mean, our majority in the Senate is very slim, so I I should temper expectations. But I I think there are a lot of opportunities to do that in this Congress with with this administration. We passed HR1. Ben, that is our pro-democracy piece of legislation that makes it a more transparent, accountable and accessible democracy. It has many of the programs that we have here in in Minnesota, like same day registration and, you know, accessible polling places, getting rid of gerrymandering, allowing for rebates to 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 stop, you know, corporate control of of Congress. All of, all of the things that we sort of have here on a, on a local, in a local and state elections process are part of the the HR1 piece of of legislation. And it's right now being debated in in the Senate. And it actually had a hearing in a committee that our Senator Amy Klobuchar chairs. It was a very fascinating debate to watch. I don't know if any of you got the opportunity to watch. But for, I think, a lot of the voting rights stuff that you were referencing, those are in HR4. It's the John Lewis Act, John Lewis Voting Rights Act. And it rest establishes the the Voting Rights Act of of sixty-five and strengthens it. And we were able to pass it in the last Congress. We are going to pass it in in the House in the last Congress. We are going to pass it in the House again. But it's a a piece of legislation that takes a long period of time because there, there is a requirement for a record to be established. Because, you know, things like Medicare for All and like the Voting Rights Act are pieces of legislation that can, could be subject to lawsuits. And if there isn't a strong record established, you know, it's, it's as if that piece of legislation isn't really meaningful because it won't withstand, I think, the the challenges that it'll face in in the court. So we're thinking June, maybe, is when it might be ready for a floor vote. And so tho- those are, I think, answers to some of the things that you all have asked. I I I try to keep, I tried to keep a mental note of of some of the points you all have brought up. I think maybe one, one of the things that I forgot to address was in regards to policing. You know, we, we took a crack at it in in the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act. I know it's a piece of legislation that that does some good. It certainly doesn't address a lot of the problems that we have in in regards to policing in in this country. And, you know, it it gets rid of qualified immunity, it bans chokeholds and it allows for a national database to be established for police officers that abuse their their power and use of and do and use excessive force. And there are a lot of other pieces of legislation that have been introduced since the murder of George Floyd that haven't had committee hearings or haven't passed in 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 Congress. And so we'll continue to to push for some, some of those things. I know that the administration shares, I would say, some of the priorities that we have in in that regard. We've been pushing for them to do some executive orders around that, again, to give directives to the Department of Justice. And, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to to do that. Many of these pieces of legislation that we've worked on, whether it is HR1, our HR8, which is our sensible gun loss legislation, like HR4, you know, are are going to face some challenges in in the Senate. The filibuster is a one man veto rule that exists in the Senate at the moment. And so we've been really frank with the administration in in coming up with the, with the strategy in moving some of these pieces of legislation, whether it is for them to push Democrats in the Senate to get rid of the filibuster or to come up with some ways that we can put these pieces of legislation in the reconciliation bills that we will pass. And so we'll continue to advocate and find ways to to move the ball in that regard. I think that's it.
I think you covered everything. So really great memory. And thank you for responding to all of those different concerns and and topics that were, are. um concerns and and topics that were are top of mind for us. Let's see, I think.
Talia looks like is backfilling some of the things that I
Okay.
Not going to tell.
Are there um any questions, additional questions or conversation points that folks want to bring up um before we close our meeting?
I I did have one. This is Councilmember Supple.
Go ahead.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, as you were talking about infrastructure, it occurred to me that about a couple of years ago, we took a tour of the airport and they were telling us about the need to upgrade the um air traffic control system. And since that is our neighbor right next door to us, I hope that that's included in that infrastructure bill as well. So, and thank you for everything you've done for us.
Yeah, I I haven't gone and maybe I'll do that again. Uh, in in the last Congress, Mary, I went uh, I don't sit on the Transportation and Infrastructure um uh Committee, but I went and uh and gave um testimony on all of the needs that not just our district but our state had in regards to infrastructure and transportation. Um, and you know, we'll we'll either resubmit our testimony um or maybe I'll appear in front of the committee again. Um, but it's been really important to us to try to uh communicate um with the committee, with the administration um on on our priorities in regards to the infrastructure transportation uh bill.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you again, Representative Omar. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to to share with us. Are there are there projects or activities or things that we could be on the lookout for that that are helpful to to your work um in in DC and in the community? What what kind of things should we have our our ears and eyes open for? And our sleeves rolled up for?
So, I mean, I think testimonies um from community members or even yourselves um are really valuable to us. Uh, you know, we um share those stories as part of our our advocacy. I mean, it's a large body. Uh, there's four hundred and thirty-five of us. Uh, I said, I serve now only on two committees. I was in on three committees in the last Congress. Now I'm only on the Education and Labor Committee and on Foreign Affairs. Um, and so the the number of legislators that I will have FaceTime with is very limited. And even with COVID, it's worse, right? We don't, we don't get to be on the floor together to have these conversations. And so um if there is a a story um that sort of captures our our housing needs or our transportation needs or, you know, even just Mary reminding me of that um tour at the airport and what the needs there were, I think all of that um is really important because we uh get to use those stories to 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 share um verbally or even send that to, you know, the committee chairs um to make sure that they're not forgetting about us uh and that they're thinking about the things that we need here.
Any other?
Mayor, if I might just add to the Congresswoman's comments, say everyone, Connor McNutt, Chief of Sapp for the Congresswoman. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things. Um, Katie, you had flagged the the Treasury guidance. I feel like um I and and a handful of other offices are badgering them on a daily basis. So um, we'll we'll stay on them and and work to get with you to make sure that that comes out smooth and quickly. Um, you know, I just wanted the infra grand that the Minnesota Department of Transportation is is pursuing. We're we're supporting that. So I just wanted to to follow up on that. And then on the community project funding, which which is just a rebranding um of earmarks, uh, you know, sorry for the the short notice on that. Um, you know, they have internally between us, the the committees have extended their deadlines for us a little bit. So there's some flexibility there and we'll definitely work with you all on that. I'm glad we were able to get that meeting scheduled. So we'll we'll certainly follow up with some more information um on that front. Um, and those were just a few of the things. So the other piece that the Congresswoman mentioned was the infrastructure package. I mean, I think we're hoping for something around four trillion dollars and that kind of seems what the president is putting forward. It includes three and a half trillion dollars in tax hikes as well, which we're very excited about. I think you know, righting some of the wrongs of the the previous administration um is is certainly wrapped up in there. And so our our push and thrust and through the Congresswoman's work on the Progressive Caucus, I mean, even today, we were kind of whipping members to see what their top five priorities were for the bill, just so we're we're getting our priorities in on the front end. Um, because we, you know, we do anticipate this going to the Senate and likely being watered down some. So we want to push the push the posts as far as we can on our side of things before um it goes over to the Senate. But um just wanted to flag a few of those things um before we signed off and just say um thank you from us to you as well. Um, we always appreciate um the partnership with Richfield and your guys' staff as well. And um, you know, I think all those praises you all are singing go all to Talia and um thank you. I know she really appreciates working with you all as well.
I do. And I just want to, before I forget, get a screenshot of everyone. Um, if everyone just wants to look at the camera and smile, I will get one if I can figure out how to do it. Okay, ready? Three, two, one. And I'll do one more, two. Three, two, one. Perfect. Thanks, everyone.
I I I will say, I think to to Sean um uh point about the the different ways that we should be thinking about transportation and infrastructure and thinking about um the uh, you know, environmental justice aspects of putting these pieces of legislation um and tying it back to, you know, what Simon just said about what what you can do for me, uh is that you you all, I think, live and breathe um the these these policies, right? Um, and, you know, I I think once we have some of the details on what this infrastructure policy looks like, we might send it uh to 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 you all to look at it and, you know, make recommendations because even a- after like priorities are included and all of that and the bills are formulated, there there are still steps um that are left where um impact on a legislation can be made. Uh, and I think that um there there, you know, there is a partnership um that you all can can provide in in making some of these policies, the best policies possible.
Absolutely. Well, we would love to do that and we're looking forward. Um, so please do send that our way once you have it.
People have lobbyists and you all can be the lobbyists.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much, Congresswoman. We appreciate you spending the time with us. We appreciate your leadership and um your staff has always been very responsive and supportive of our work. So thank you to the staff as well. And thanks to our staff and and our council members for joining us as well and sharing those priorities. And you know how to get ahold of us and we appreciate um this time with you.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.